I know you still got 10 seconds left. How you doing? Always good to see you, sir. Always.
Oh, I do. Thank you. I couldn't see it.
Man, did you see that last play?
No. No.
We gotta talk after the meeting. I'll stay. We ready? Okay. Good morning, everybody. Those who are here in our chambers and those who are on our virtual Zoom meeting, I want to welcome you to this meeting on December the first, this Thursday, December the first, in the year of 2022. We're gonna start our meeting off, this exciting meeting. I promise you, it's going to be an exciting meeting, one that you will never forget. I promise. We're gonna start our meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like Director Bonnie Gore to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can, would you please stand?
Allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to establish the quorum and also make any housekeeping announcements that you'd like to make at this time?
Thank you. Good morning. Just a reminder for our members in the room, it's great to see you here, and it's great to see our members online as well. If you're in the room and you'd like to speak or make a comment, please press the button on the microphone in front of you, and when it lights green, that means that you are live and it will go through the Zoom system. And we are sharing microphones today, so if it's not directly in front of you, it will still pick you up, I promise. All right, we'll go ahead and call roll. Director Baines?
Present.
Bernascony?
Here.
Bradford?
Here.
Branscombe?
Here.
Bulahan?
Here.
Burris? Absent Clark Creutz?
Here.
Desmond? Ferricks?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Gialdo?
Here.
Gog?
Good morning.
Gore?
Here.
Guerrero? Absent Harris?
Here.
Joyner?
Here.
Kozlowski? Absent Lozano?
Here.
Middleton? Absent New?
Here.
Sander? Absent Saragosa?
Here.
Sailor?
Here.
Chenier? Absent Spockley? Absent Stallard? Soon?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
West? Absent Vice Chair Kennedy?
Here.
Chair Jennings?
Here.
And ex officio tackler for Bennie Paul?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a quorum, so we can move on. And at this point in time, I'd like to move to public comment. This is a time for anyone who wishes to address the board on an item that does not appear elsewhere on this agenda. Lynette, did we receive any public comment?
There are no public communications.
And is there any member of the public who wishes to comment?
There's no comment.
All righty. With that being said, we will now move to our consent calendar. These items are intended to be approved in one motion. However, anyone can remove an item for a separate discussion. Does the director wish to remove an item at this time? Lynette, is there anyone from the public who wishes to remove an item for public comment?
I don't see any hands raised.
All right, hearing none, seeing none. Is there a motion and a second to approve the calendar?
Saragosa move.
Thomas, second.
Would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Baines?
I...
Bernascony? Director Bernascony, could you please indicate your vote?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you. Bradford?
Aye.
Branscombe?
Aye.
Bulahan?
Aye.
Burris? Absent Clark Creutz?
Yes.
Desmond? Ferricks?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Gialdo?
Aye.
Gog?
Yes.
Gore?
Aye.
Guerrero? Absent Harris?
Yes.
Joyner?
Aye.
Kozlowski? Absent Lozano?
Aye.
Middleton? Absent New?
Here.
Sander? Absent Saragosa?
Aye.
Sailor?
Aye.
Chenier? Absent Spockley? Stallard?
Aye.
Soon?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
West? Absent Vice Chair Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Chair Jennings, I just, this could be old, but I see a hand up, Michael Harris Kubaka's in the attendees. Is that, it's been up, I just didn't know.
Thank you, Director Soon. Yes, Chair Jennings, we have a member of the public, Michael Harris Kubaka. Would you like him to provide public comment at this time?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Let me just pull him in. Michael Harris, you're in the board meeting. You are welcome to provide public comment. We do have a three-minute limit.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, it is a blessing in many ways. Today, I am enjoying this rain, and I decided not to come down in the rain to see y'all in person, but many of y'all know me for a long time. And I thank Chair Rick Jennings for his service and look forward to Chair Kennedy handling the gavel well. Today, I'm sharing with you great news. Next week, the UN Permanent Forum for People of African Descent will host its first meeting in Geneva, Switzerland. Our team is there, and I don't need to be nowhere near that ice in Switzerland right now. But the idea that UN was founded right down the street in San Francisco some years ago, and now the blessing of, you know, William Leidersdorf, the story of the first treasure, San Francisco owner, 35,000 acres here in Sacramento County, we get to tell that story on a global platform. And then next year, well, I mean, before I go to next year, this year, we have our 24th Kwanzaa at the state capitol. This year, it's under construction right outside of your office in the Rose Garden. We're gonna have our 24th Kwanzaa celebration, and this year, we're extending it for everybody. Of course, we do our deep dive at home and in our community places, churches, where we celebrate the California-grown holiday of Kwanzaa. 56 years, Dr. Melana Karanga founded it here in California, and now it's global. And then next year, the big news is we're bringing the world, the 11th Pan-African Global Trade and Investment Conference is coming to Sacramento. And next week, well, not next week, December 14th, I think there'll be 45 presidents in Africa that will be in Washington DC, expanding global trade and commerce with the African continent, 1.6 billion people on the planet. And we're bringing that energy to Sacramento, you know, my hometown, for the 11th Pan-African Global Trade and Investment Conference. And I shared with City Councilmember Jennings that I'm offering him to be at the seat of authority because of his work and our friendship to really showcase the blessing of the bounty of the greatest garden in the world, right here in the heart of the capital region of California. So I hope I'm adding to Chair Jennings' notion that you'll never forget this day. This meeting is good, it's great, we have the greatest region, and not, I say that because I was born here, but there is no other place blessed geographically. There's plenty of gold under the ground still, and, you know...
Mr. Harris, thank you so much.
If we do this well, we're gonna, I'm done. If we do, when we do this well, we'll all be able to say, "Good and faithful service, well done." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Michael Harris, we thank you for your leadership in this region and all that you do to make it better, and we thank you for giving us this information. I would encourage you to send the written information to our CEO, James Corless, so he can make sure that it gets out to everyone here and everyone that's a board member here at SECOG. Okay?
I will do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. It's my friend, Michael Harris. Seriously, it's my friend. I served with his mother, and he's now doing service himself, so I'm really proud of him. We now will move to action item number three, and this is where we start getting this meeting to that exciting part that I was telling you about, all right? This is approve a resolution thanking and honoring the external members of the Race Equity and Inclusion Working Group. Many of you know the work that had to be done in that group, and it was our board members who worked with external members from the public that really were able to move the agenda in this work. I'm gonna ask our executive director, James Corless, to present the item.
Well, thank you, Chair Jennings, and I think this maybe is a, it's a prelude to the next information item on the annual highlights. So if we look back at the accomplishments of the year, but also the last two years around our racial equity work, and many of you served on this working group, we've had a working group for two years that has included 10 board members, but also included 10 external partners. And that, not unlike actually the Commercial Corridor Task Force, actually, before it, where we had board members and then members from the housing community, private sector developers, affordable housing developers. I think this working group deserves a tremendous amount of credit. I think the, you never know when you put board members together with the external partners, but in this case, I think it was remarkably fruitful. I think the discussions were genuine, tough, and on point, and I think that working group really yielded a lot of the work that you came to then discuss, debate, and adopt this year with the Racial Equity Statement of Change and Commitment and the Racial Equity Action Plan. So this really is, in some ways, it's ministerial, but in other ways, it really is a profound thanks to our external partners on this working group. We are looking to reform the Race Equity Inclusion Working Group for next year, and now that we actually have an action plan, the idea behind the working group next year is to implement. We've said we would do things now as a region, as an agency, and the working group next year will, I think, look different. We'll bring that proposal to you in January, but it will likely include external partners again because this has been so successful, and perhaps also your own staffs, staffs of partner agencies to really make this real. So this really is a moment where we really get to thank our partners. If you served on the REI Working Group, you know who they are and how important a role they played. So I just wanted to say a huge thank you from us as staff and recommend this item for approval.
Great, great. Okay, is there a director that has a question or a comment regarding this item? Director Soon?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Jennings. I just wanna quickly say, you know, behalf of everybody on the group, oftentimes, lack of a better term, us talking heads get together to develop policy, but it was, it was really, we're really grateful to have people who do the work every day, participating and adding input, and made the work so much richer and the product, to me, so much better. So just went off that comment, our thanks as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. A couple, I think in tandem of the comments of Director Soon, I mean, you know, this has been an iterative process, right? The first year, and sort of after the murder of George Floyd and issues and issues that we were seeing reckoning in 2020, you know, there was this attempt, of course, to form a board, you know, REI Working Group, but realized that as the evolution of that, as it went on, that was really needed was additional voices from the community, to your points around those that are doing the work every day. So really, I can't believe how much the work was enhanced by that participation, all those voices from the community. So, so grateful for that. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Other comments or questions? Lynette, I hope you're keeping an eye on the virtual board for me.
I am, Chair Jennings. I don't see any, any questions or comments.
If there are no more questions or comments, I'd like a motion to approve. Don Sailor is approved?
Second.
I think you got beat up. He says you can have it. Director Baines seconds it. Okay, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Baines?
Aye.
Bernascony?
Aye.
Bradford?
Aye.
Branscombe?
Aye.
Bulahan?
Aye.
Burris? Absent Clark Creutz?
Yes.
Desmond? Ferricks?
Aye.
Frost?
Aye.
Gialdo?
Aye.
Gog?
Yes.
Gore?
Aye.
Guerrero? Absent Harris?
Yes.
Joyner?
Aye for Gialdo. Sorry, I lost my signal.
Thank you, Director Gialdo. Director Joyner, I'm sorry, could you repeat your vote?
That's all right. It was aye.
Thank you. Director Lozano? Middleton? Absent New?
Aye.
Sander? Absent Saragosa?
Aye.
Sailor?
Aye.
Chenier? Absent Spockley?
Yes.
Stallard?
Yes.
Soon?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
West? Absent Vice Chair Kennedy?
Aye.
And Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And I don't want to move on to the next item until we at least acknowledge, I took over for the last two years of the Race Equity and Inclusion Group, Director Ferich. I stood on his shoulders because of the work that he did in getting it started. And I just, I want to stop for a second and just thank him because that's a year and a half, two years ago. And I know he probably got, he properly got thanked at that time, but I want to let him know that I studied everything he did, I watched him, I learned from him, I counseled with him, and I stood on those shoulders. And that's the foundation that you have to have, all of us have to have, to stand on someone else's shoulders. And so I just want to thank you personally for all you did to get us to this point. Give him a round of applause, if you will, please. Okay, we will move to our next item, which is an information item, and this is SECOG's annual highlights. So now, if you watched ESPN last week, you saw at the, in the highlights, you saw Jacobs from the Oakland Raiders run 80-something yards down the field to win the game in overtime. Like, that's a highlight, right? And those of us who are Raider fans and those who are Raider haters, you still love what you saw them going through. You love those highlights, when a guy can pull the game out at the end of the game, you love it, right? I'm getting ready to show you a highlight film that's one you're gonna remember for the rest of your life. Take it away, KC!
No pressure. Wow, okay. I'm gonna try to bring my game here. All right. Good morning. Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Casey Lozan, your Deputy Executive Director for Planning and Programs. I have the privilege to present to you the 22 highlights for SECOG this year. I'm very excited to do that. I think what you will find is that this is not a highlight so much of individual, individuals or individual agencies, but really of collaborative efforts in this region. I want to emphasize collaboration because... Come on. It's dead. There we go. What's that? No, that's good. That's what I want. All right. Because this was not just SECOG as your staff and your board, but these amazing accomplishments here would not have been possible without collaboration and engagement from, yes, your board and your staff here at SECOG, but also your local staff, our other public agency partners, our community-based organizations, and business partners. So let's get into these highlights. So first off, you adopted a new strategic plan after 12 years, I think, with a new vision, mission, and goals. It's new in form, it's in a plan now, but it really is not new in concept. It's just documenting and writing what we've all been working on for the last few years. So firstly, you have a vision for a vibrant and thriving Sacramento region for all, and you have a mission to convene and connect the region to advance an equitable, sustainable, and prosperous future. And within that strategic plan, which is in hard copy in front of you, and we also have a definition of what equity, sustainability, and prosperity looks like in this region. Ooh, there we go. Okay, so we also have made quite a bit of progress towards that ultimate vision. That's what these highlights are showing for you today. So the region saw amazing investment in active transportation this year. The state budget is gonna bring $45.5 million to SECOG's regional funding program, and in a statewide competition through, again, a lot of collaborative effort for the communities in the Sacramento region, this region is gonna see $83.6 million awarded from the statewide competition for active transportation projects. Through our collective efforts, again, the Sacramento region won $5 million of a Raze planning grant that's gonna accelerate community-driven transportation and clean mobility projects in the region. And after four years, from concept to advocacy to state budget to awarding, Green Means Go is making its first awards in this region. So you took an action earlier to award $3.2 million, the first tranche of funding, to programs or to projects. So five awardees are gonna use these funds to accelerate infill development in different communities in the region, to revitalize commercial corridors, to help solve our housing crisis, to help achieve state climate goals. Another $30 million is going to be awarded early next year. The applications are under review right now. And we just finished up, as shown in this slide, a fantastic partnership with the Urban Lands Institute through this Green Means Go program on a run of technical assistance panels. So for Yuba City, for Marysville, for Northwatt Avenue in unincorporated Sacramento County, and for Folsom. You also this year adopted the Ready-Set Trails Plan, so this is 1,000 miles of trail network in the Sacramento region, and we have communities, as you'll see from photos in the, in the actual hard copy, communities already implementing that trails plan. It's been mentioned earlier, the Race Equity Inclusion Working Group has done a significant amount of work. Your board adopted a Racial Equity Statement of Change and Commitment earlier this year, followed by a Racial Equity Action Plan that implements that statement. And in the course of all that work, the REI Working Group was recognized by the Sacramento Chapter of WTS, the Women Transportation Seminar, with a Rosa Parks Diversity Leadership Award for the development of that statement. This is also concluding year four of the Youth Leadership Academy at SECOG. Through those four years, we've graduated 150 students from that program, and the leadership of our graduates was highlighted, as you see in this image, in the first-ever Valley Vision Liveability Summit, which was sponsored by SECOG. We've also been traveling not just within this region, but around the country to other regions. Many of you, including other guests from the region, got to do two tours, Salt Lake City and Northern Virginia, to learn from successes in infill housing, sustainable greenfield development, and integrated transit systems. And then, of course, we have kicked off work on the blueprint, that SECOG's Long Range Transportation and Land Use Plan. We've toured the region, and to date, we have visited 26 of 28 of your jurisdictions, and don't worry, the other two are scheduled for very early next year. And then finally, you've adopted guidelines for a revolving match grant program. A funding round is underway, but the milestone here is this revolving match grant program, and awarded the first round of those funds so that we can help leverage that funding for projects in this region to make them more competitive for even bigger pots of funding at the state and federal levels. And so with that, everything I've presented and more are in that highlights document that's sitting in front of you. On behalf of your SECOG staff, it's been an honor to do this work with you, with our partners, with our local staff. We're one big team for the communities in this region, and we are looking forward to more in 2023.
When I listen to you talk and when I read this highlights, it just makes me so proud to be sitting on this board and, and being a part of the team of SECOG staff and board members that are achieving such great results for everyone that we serve. So I just am very, very proud. And this is a true highlight film. It's even better than Josh Jacobs. Well, they're not gonna go to playoffs, so it doesn't matter. No, thank you, thank you. Is there a board member that wishes to make a comment at this time on this?
Chair Jennings, I just, obviously, this represents a tremendous amount of work from our SECOG staff, and just really want to acknowledge your work and thank you all for your efforts in not only helping us connect with each other, but connecting with, with greater opportunities to bring back resources to advance these initiatives. So just really want to thank all of you for your work and look forward to working with you all next year. I can't wait to see what we can accomplish.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, Chair, yes, please.
Yeah, I just want to, again, thank staff as well for all the work on Green Means Go. It was a tough, tough sledding to get that money out of the legislature, and it really was on the efforts that you all did to get this going and to really make the, into a statewide program, if you will. So again, just wanted, I have a heartfelt thanks to all of you for the work that you did on this project, and looking forward to what our new opportunities will be next year. In a challenging budget year, but there's still maybe opportunities out there. So again, thank you.
Good. Don, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hit your microphone. Just hit the button.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this, this is a wonderful recap of a tremendous amount of work, and I appreciate Wendy's comment on that, but there's so much more that's not said in this. There's so much work that you've stepped up to the plate at every time pitch came all through this year, and as you have always, our team here has become a go-to voice for our region, and it's, and I appreciate that a great deal. And I know our entire region benefits from the work of all of the people who work for SECOG and for this, this collaborative team of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sailor. Director Soon?
Thank you, Chair Jennings. I also want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. There's so much effort that's, I mean, I can't believe this is only about three pages because you've done so much more work than that. The, and I'm looking at the trails map and thousands of miles, and I think back to all the data and everything that you put together, you combed through to try to, try to find a way of how we set metrics and rate things for all these board members to consider. So I just, it's not, it can't be understated how, how much work we know you all put into this to support this mission to have a better Sacramento region, and we sincerely thank you from all of us at the board.
Guess one thing else, Rick?
Okay, please.
You know what? If it was easy, anybody could do it. These guys, it's a hard work. This is hard, and you have just every time come to the, come to the fore.
So I tell everybody that'll listen that the acronym TEAM stands for, Together Everyone Achieves More. And you can see what the team, the whole team of SECOG, the staff, our executive director, his leadership cabinet, the board, the external members, you can see us working together to come to these kind of highlights. And so that's why I say, I feel very proud of the work that's been done, and I'm excited to be a part of this board. So thank you so much for all the work. Again, good job. Okay, we done, everybody? Anybody? Last comments, last time, last call? All right, we're gonna now move to some of those who helped us to get to this feeling of accomplishment, and those are some of our departing board members. I'm gonna ask, when I call your name, to please stand, and will the board member presenting the plaque, please join the standing board member. I'm gonna start with Lucas Ferricks, and Don Sailor will present his plaque. I'm gonna go to Pierre New, and presenting his plaque will be Director Stallard. I'm gonna go to Don Sailor, and presenting his plaque will be Director Saragosa. And then I'm gonna go to Matt Spockley, and Bonnie, Director Gore, will present his plaque. And so if we will start with Lucas, Don Sailor presenting Lucas his plaque, please? Just right next to each other, be fine. This is a picture opportunity.
It's a picture opportunity, that's right.
Be right next.
Well, Lucas was wondering if he was...
Want me to send him up there? I think they want me to send you to the podium. Yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to use this mic?
Sure.
Oh, all right, I'll use that mic. Use the handheld mic.
Okay, this is a time to take your camera up.
This is the practice run. All the rest of you will have this in their hand. So in 1996, I was a member of the Davis Joint Unified School District Board of Trustees, and I made a point to go to every, every event that young people were involved in, whether it was a sporting event or a performing arts event. was a sporting event or a performing arts event. And I saw this one character as a member of the Davis High School Jazz Choir, where they would dress up in kind of showtoon costumes and dance all over the place and sing. And this guy, I just, I have a visual in my mind's eye, has really stuck. He's had this huge smile that wrapped around his ears and was so enthusiastic. Everybody was his friend, and I thought, well, this kid must have grown up in Davis. He must have probably three generations of life in Davis. And it's Lucas, of course, and he carries that same enthusiasm today. But Lucas had only moved to Davis as a senior. He arrived in Davis in 1996 and immediately connected with everybody. And you can see that that trait has continued and has served us well. Fast forward 26 years, Lucas is the mayor of that town that he moved to as a high school senior when he didn't know a single person in the town. He joined our SACOG board in August of 2014, was vice chair in 2019, chaired the Lunar Committee in 2017, and served as chair of the board in 2020. Lucas and I have served together on nine different boards and commissions, five of them right now. We're on five different boards and commissions. And the guys, now that he's succeeding me, every time I go into some meeting in the last six weeks or so, and a few more to come, they're all telling me goodbye and saying great things about me. And now I get to say the same thing about him. And it's just such a treat for our region and for me personally to have Lucas continue and to have him follow me as a member of the Board of Supervisors as he's followed as the mayor of Davis. I am so, so proud of the work that he's done. And I would tell you, there's one thing that's changed since 1996. He's older. And the best job he's ever had was probably the wines expert at the Davis Food Co-op. But he did lead us during his time as chair. He restarted the Mega Region Working Group with James and others on our team. But boy, he led that relaunch and connected us across the region. As Rick has already recognized, the Race Equity and Inclusion Working Group, and he kept us together during the pandemic in that first year where none of us knew what was going to happen next. Lucas, there is a plaque for you, and I'm going to give it to you now. Thank you, my friend. I don't know, does he get to say something?
Yes, he does.
Thank you so much, Don. Appreciate that really over-the-top. That was just, thank you. I'm really, really basically speechless about it. I have thoroughly enjoyed, so thoroughly enjoyed, my time serving in this organization. I think it does such fantastic work. I'm grateful to have had that privilege and honor to do not only work on the board, but also to work my way around the organization and get involved and deeply involved in all facets and ultimately be involved in the leadership as well. This is the place in the Sacramento region where people in the region look to for real regional leadership. And I think that there's a lot, we just saw in the highlights reel from 2022, there's a lot of, clearly a lot of real reasons for that. I don't think I will be on the board next year. I will be joining the Yolo County Board of Supervisors, but I think another supervisor is likely to be serving on this board, and I am completely all in to support whoever that is. But I will definitely still be very involved in regional issues, and there are a lot of issues that SACOG takes on currently that are, of course, personal interest to bind. So continue to be involved as much as you'll have me, and thank you so much. I'm just so grateful for the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
If you guys will stay there for a second, I'm going to open it up to the floor to, for any directors that would like to make any comments, please.
I'd like to, Mr. Chair, thank you. Lucas, I want to say thank you for your leadership. You stepped up during a really challenging time as chair, but I have so appreciated just your hard work, your willingness to do hard things and step up. And I expect that you should be the alternate to SACOG, so when your colleague cannot show up, you can join us here in person. And I am so pleased that I get to work with you in the future as a county supervisor. I know Yolo County will be served well by you, but thank you for all that you have done to serve our community. I really appreciate it. I am pleased to call you a friend, and you certainly were encouraging to me as I took on the chair of this organization. So thank you.
Vice Chair Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Lucas, you and I have the mantra, if you're not going to be additive, then don't speak. So I'll try to be additive and just say that I am, you know, hoping to be chair of this organization in the future. And I have already tapped into your experience, your commitment to this organization to prepare for that role. But most what has struck me over the years, and we've been friends a long time, what has struck me was I got to know you not just on a friend basis, but on a policy basis, is your commitment to regionalism. I think as much as anybody sitting around this table, you check your Davis hat, your Yolo County hat, when necessary, and you become a regional leader. And that's hard to do sometimes, but you've done it well, and you've been an inspiration to me, and I thank you for your service.
Director Staller.
Well, I actually think Director Kennedy said a lot of what I was about to say. I only get to serve with you on three boards, but anywhere I've engaged with you, you are so committed to what needs to be done. You have become an amazing expert in transportation issues, whether it was the Capitol Corridor train, the Yolo County Transportation District, Yolo Bus, obviously here at SACOG. You are a real contributor, Lucas, and those of us who've been able to work with you are privileged to have done so, and I thank you, and I look forward to more in the future.
Director Saragosa.
Lucas, we'll dearly miss you here on this board, and as Bonnie said, I think an alternate is absolutely, should be done. And if anyone's listening, please, that's an alternative. That's what we need to see. But I just want to thank you again for your service and welcoming me when I was a newbie to the board and really kind of getting me to understand the ropes of how things work here and kind of a kindred spirit because we both work in the same business in our other life as lobbyists. So I think we kind of hit it off the bat from there. But just your leadership, I like your style, you know. I move into a vice chair role, you know, looking to you and to your leadership skills as I go to work. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Director Sun.
Thank you, Chair Jennings. I can't be additive because I think it's all been said, but I do want to offer my own personal thanks because we met when I came on this board as well after you, and I really appreciated, you know, your extension of welcome to me. I feel like we've got grow to be friends as well, and really appreciated, as others have stated, your leadership on this board. We look forward to working with you as a supervisor in the region as well.
Chair Jennings, Director Clark Kretz has her hand raised.
Let's do it.
Thank you. Lucas, I just wanted to thank you so much. I will never forget, two years ago when I walked in, or three, I can't remember now, as a new board member, and you were just so welcoming to me. And every single time I've come to a meeting, you've gone out of your way to say hi, and I just think that, you know, that type of leadership is really super important, especially for new board members. I loved every time you talked, you're so eloquent, you're inspiring. I just, I can't say enough about your kindness. And, you know, I know there's going to be a lot of new board members coming in, and I think that that type of leadership, you know, will hopefully pass on to the people that are coming in this time. And again, thank you, Lucas. You're a true blue individual, and I wish you the best of luck.
Well said. Anyone else?
Chair Jennings, if I could, please. There's a lot I could say, just working so closely with you, Lucas, over the last few years. But I, and so much has been said already about Lucas, but I think Lucas embodies the best of this region from a perspective of a public servant, and that is absolute energetic optimism, thinking regionally, and frankly, not caring where you're from or what your political affiliation is, working with you no matter what for the greater good. And we could all use a lot of that going forward. Those of you that were around may remember when I was relatively new to SACOG, and the chair and vice chair was coming up, and we had a discussion about, we used to alternate county, city, county, city, county, city. And of course, our old friend Christopher Cabaldin had done the math, knowing that Lucas had his eyes on chair, and he said, "I've got the campaign motto right now for Eric's 2036." Because it was just going to be impossible for city members to serve, and you relaxed that. Lucas became chair in 2020, and as already has been said, had no idea, like the rest of us, that a pandemic would ensue. And I remember talking to you so much throughout that in those first few months of the pandemic. And, okay, I guess we're not going to do an in-person mega-region meeting. I guess we're not going to do the thing that we had thought about. And I said this to you already, but I hope it's really evident to everybody, the ideas that Lucas put in motion as chair are the ideas that we just went over through the annual highlights, are the ideas that stick, right, because of your perspective and your energy and your ability to get people excited about things, which is a gift. And I will really miss that. I know we'll work together closely, and we'll see you as the, hopefully, the alternate and then some. But really, I just can't thank you enough for giving us a model of leadership and energy and optimism, like I said. Just, it's incredibly inspiring, so thank you.
So Lucas, I'll close this out in just saying that you may not be the official member of the SACOG board, but you will always be a member of SACOG. And your voice, your point of view will always be heard, and the door is always open for you to come and speak it so that people can hear what you have to say. You are a true leader in this region. You're one that many of us look up to. When you don't know it, we're looking at you. And you represent leadership, and you represent yourself and your family extremely well. So I'm proud to be your friend. I'm proud to be your SACOG board member and look forward to continually working together. So give him a round of applause, if you will.
Mr. Chair, if I may say one more thing, since Don threw Lucas under the bus, I will join you, my friend, and say that I too was on the jazz choir in high school.
Okay, what instrument?
No, the voice.
Oh, man. That was my instrument. Okay, I got it, I got it. All right. I'm going to have Director New come to the podium, please, and I'm going to have his presenter, who's going to present the plaque, Director Staller. Come on, you can give him a round of applause while they go out there. Come on, come on.
First thing I'd like to say is, I was a SACOG member who went away for eight years and then came back. Lucas, you're going to do the same, we know it. But not, you won't take nearly as long because you're very fast. One of the things I think we all need to realize is how wonderful everybody at this table is. And some of us are quieter than others, and I'm standing next to one of those quieter members. But if they say that Still Waters Run Deep, that's certainly the case with Pierre New. The more you know him, the more impressive he is. This man has given, what, nine years on the planning commission, eight years at the city council, 17 years total to the city of Winters. He's passionate about Winters. He's passionate about small communities. And those of you who come from the small communities know, you have small staffs. You really depend on caring members to really drive things for their communities. Pierre went to bat for Winters on Green Means Go and helped them succeed. He's also passionate about low-income housing, and he's doing a lot of things that we never see here at SACOG. I think you might be interested to know that his career was teaching woodshop at middle school level. Pierre lives in a beautiful Craftsman-era home on Main Street in Winters, filled with beautiful Craftsman-era furnishings. You know, he's just totally committed to that lifestyle. I've had the pleasure of being in that home, eating dinner at his table. It's just a wonderful thing. He has been a 30-year member of the Davis Bike Club. This man has participated in many ultra-distance biking events. We're talking 100 mile, 150 mile, 200 mile, including in France, right? Anywhere else in Europe, Pierre?
No.
No, okay. Anyway, and I've seen he and his wife on their tandem riding between Winters and Davis regularly on many occasions. So, you know, this is a really great guy, and he's been here now for six years. He's been on a land use committee, right? You know, he's just a really solid, decent guy, and we're so glad to have had him here. Pierre, on behalf of all of us, thank you for your six years here. Here is your plaque, my friend, and share us any parting words of wisdom.
Oh, thanks. It's been a, okay. It's, I have to speak now, and I have to speak so that people can hear me? Yes. Okay, all right. It's really been an education to be here and a pleasure. I have to admit that I don't like the drive over here, but zooming was fine. Zooming only wouldn't have done it, though. I've met a lot of people here and become friends with many of you, have become friends of people that are no longer on the board. But I know that I've reached out to many people, and they've come through for Winters and for me, and I can, I know that I can go back and ask people, you know, what have you done about whatever it is? And I am concerned, well, about many things, but low-cost housing is a big issue with, for me, and within Winters, we need a lot of it. So I'll also say, before I was on the board, I had no idea what SACOG was doing. I know that we'd get reports back at city council meeting and say, oh, I was at SACOG, and this is what went on. And I thought, okay. And then all of a sudden, I was here. And it was quite a learning curve to begin with, but everybody helped. And as Tom said, I'm fairly quiet, I know that. I generally get done what I'm supposed to do. And with SACOG's help, we've got a lot done in Winters, and I thank you all and keep up the good work. I'm going to keep my finger in the works, but I won't be in this room.
How about Saturday night, 6 o'clock?
Oh, yeah. Saturday night, 6 o'clock is the annual Winters Tractor Parade. If you come at 5:30, you probably won't get in. Now, there's no gate in the entrance to our town, but last year, the cars were backed up on 505 and on 128. So please come. I don't know what the weather is going to be like at that time. Come early. There'll be lots of food trucks, lots of things going on all weekend, actually, starting Friday at 10:00, they're going to have booths and things on Main Street. That will be happening also Saturday morning, and then the parade starts 6 o'clock Saturday evening. So it's a fun event. If you haven't seen pictures of it, you can see it online, Winters Tractor Parade. But every year, the people compete with each other, who can have the most fantastic lighted trailer. And it's not just lights. I mean, they're going up and down and around and moving. It's articulated now. So that's it. I can talk about that easily. Other things, not so much. But I appreciate all the help that I've gotten from all of you and look forward to seeing you. I might even zoom in once in a while to see what's happening and keep track of all of you. But thank you. SACOG's very important. I never knew that before, but I know it now.
All right. All right, directors, any parting comments for Director New?
Please. Yeah, Pierre, I'm so grateful to have been serving with you for the past six years, but also...
but also to get to know you personally and as a friend. I really am grateful for your service beyond the council, of course. And as Tom mentioned, the Planning Commission in Winters. You have given me so much in the way of insights to that community, as I will now in part be representing it at the county level. I'm really, really grateful for our past friendship, but I'm also really excited about our current and future friendship. I hope to be able to still call on you, you know, for all, just your thoughts and advice as I sort of embark on this new role. I also would just say, you know, there's one thing about, I'm glad that the Tractor Parade was mentioned because it's fantastic, but it's even more fantastic taking it all in from his front lawn, which I don't know if the invitation still stands, but you know, you know, if he's out there this Saturday night. But it is really just the most fantastic thing in one of the most fantastic.
Bring your folding chair and talk your way onto Pierre's front lawn, which is right on the parade route.
Exactly, absolutely. So, thank you so much, Pierre, for all your, all your work.
We'll span the lawn. I'll let your neighbors know.
There you go, there you go. Other comments?
Thank you so much.
Please.
Pierre, both, actually, it's very interesting. District two in Yolo County has two cities in it, Davis and Winters. And we're losing both of them from this board. And new members will come in from, from both of the two cities and from the county. And it's been such a joy to work with you in partnership for the past 10 years, as I've been a part of the Winters community as your supervisor and the Board of Supervisors. I think you were my daughter's teacher at one time, when she was in junior high school at Emerson Junior High. And so, we've known each other an awfully long time. I know that the Winters community has benefited from your, your service and leadership in more ways than we can count. And you've kept, you've kept that council honest. You've kept them, kept them focused on what needs to happen. I really appreciate your service here and your friendship.
Other comments?
Director New, you made some comments to me while this meeting was going on. And you talked about your quiet nature. But the comments you made to me had such a profound effect. And I talked back to you to tell you what it meant to me. And if you talk to the students who went through your class the way you talk to me, then you have had many successful students go through your class and have reached their full potential in life because of the encouragement that you gave them. And you gave them the confidence to be able to be successful. So, I heard that in our conversation, just to me, because it made me feel like I could do anything. So, I appreciate you for that and I appreciate all you've done for this board and what you're doing for the city of Winters. And I may take you up on that tractor event if I can get Saturday free. So, thank you so much again for your service.
Round of applause, please. Okay, Don Saylor, you are on the hot seat. And Director Saragosa will present the plaque. And the hot seat is a good seat to be on, right there.
Exactly. There were actual auditions for that.
Let me take my mic.
Not, not for me either. I, I played football for one season, but my school was so good that I played like one minute. So, I was a good tackling dummy, I guess. No, Don, I just, I want to thank you for 45 years of public service in the state of California, on City of Davis, Board of Supervisors, and 14 years here at Secog. I know when I, I first came in, you were one of the first to greet me and people like Tom Stollard and Lucas. And I was like, wow, I'm never gonna be able to learn what the, what these guys know and ask the questions that they ask. And I think that's always, the one thing that stood out to me was, you can ask questions, you can make comments, but I always was impressed. And, you know, I learned so much from the questions you asked because you kind of got to the crux of the argument and, you know, really, you know, understood what we were doing and the complexity of all of it. So, you've taught me so much. I know you've taught so much of your colleagues so much as we've been here. And just, you know, from, so I'll just go through these real quickly here. You know, joined the board in 2008, vice chair in 2014, board chair in 2015, chair at the previous PNI Committee in 2011 and 2012, chair Transportation this year in 2022. And was just, you know, so proud to be able to work with you on, on many of these as well. You also created the Nomination Committee as the way we have it today. So, thank you for that as well and for your work on the Nomination Committee. You've worked, you know, throughout Yolo County. And one of the things that stood out to me was your, your work at the Food Hub in Esparto to provide food security, you know, support working lands and to centralize transportation for locally grown food. So, it was something that I didn't know. And so, I really want to thank you for that as someone who's a, a big Aggie myself. So, you know, the last thing I just want to say is, not only did I learn so much from you, but the thing that I take out of it the most is your friendship and your encouragement and a chance for me to grow. So, on behalf of Secog staff, your colleagues, thank you so much to your, for your service to Secog. Thank you very much.
Well, it means a lot, Michael, to hear from you. And I've really appreciated watching you grow and your participation and your service to this group. And I'm so excited that, that you were selected to be the vice chair this, for this coming year. Really, really, very proud to know you. This Secog team is, is the finest group that I've ever been a part of in this region. You know, we're so well-served by, by, by this organization. This is the assignment that everybody wants and for good reason, because we get stuff done. There is a regional lens. This is, we cannot act as individual jurisdictions or as individual members of our, of our governing bodies effectively if we don't have a regional lens. Mobility across our region is essential. And thinking about land use, thinking about the lives of the people we serve, they don't see boundaries in their daily lives. They are working together across our region. And we as leaders must, must recognize that and really focus on it. Whenever we find ourselves at this table struggling about how to meet one jurisdiction's specific priorities, we, we really need to step back and remember that we're here for each other. We're here for the entire region. I'm so proud to have served. This has been one of the most important parts of my service over those years. And I remember in 2010, when I left, left the Secog board, the last time I got a plaque and there was a good chance I was going to be continuing service as a member of the Board of Supervisors. But there was always that possibility. So, I, so my, my motto has always been, take the plaque. So, I have it. Here it is. And thank you, everybody, for, for your, your friendships, for your partnerships, for the tough conversations, the fun ones, and for really exposing all of us to what happens across the country. Those regional visits have just been incredible to, to understand how other people skin the cat. We, we're not going to copy anybody, but we're going to capture their best ideas and their best approaches and see if they apply. And we'll, and we'll, we'll gain from each of those visits. And others will come and, and take the same, take pieces away from what we've done. I'm so, so proud of the work with, with all of you, the board and staff over the years. Thank you.
Don, if you'll stay up there for a minute, we'll take comments from the board at this time. Looking around. Okay. Lucas, I'll let you go first.
I mean, a lot has been said, you know, in Don's introduction to me and sort of folks understand that long, long-time relationship between the two of us. I am, so I have been in your sphere since I was a senior in high school and ever, and since that point. So, you know, even though that was just three years ago, I definitely, I'm getting closer to three decades ago, I am so grateful for our continued partnership. And I have learned so much from you. And I have extremely, extremely large shoes to fill. And that seems so inadequate to say. It's much more than just that. So, I am really just grateful for the past, but also the current, present, and really looking forward to the future as a continued friend and mentor and your advice and everything like that. Thank you so much.
Director Kennedy.
Don, I'm really sorry to see you go. You, I think you were the chair the first year I was on the board, perhaps, at least vice chair. And I've watched your leadership. I've watched, I, I don't know that there's anybody I've seen on this board since I've been serving on it who eats, drinks, breathes, you know, Secog. I mean, you are the epitome of Secog. You really are. And I can tell you from personal experience, I once, it was anticipated I was going to make a vote that Don didn't like. He wasn't particularly happy about that vote. And all I got was a text that said, that's very disappointing. And I, I was just taken out to the woodshed by my Secog dad. But it's, that's all true, but, and, but, so I want to thank you for, you know, never taking your foot off the pedal when it came to Secog issues and the region. And thank you for your leadership and service.
Director Stollard.
I was thinking, I also served with Don on three boards right now and many others, it seems, over the years. I think the quality, Don, that you bring to your public service, besides the big heart behind it all, is your tenacity. And when I'm on the other side of an issue with you, it's painful. You are, you are tenacious and you, you're like the dog with the bone. You just never let go until you get the bone. But anyway, it's an admirable quality and you're always a gentleman. And it's just been marvelous to be your friend and to go on this journey with you. And I can just tell you, you know, it, I would liken it to Dennis pulling the molar out of the jaw. You are that kind of impact in this region. And your stepping back is a big loss to us all, but you've left a huge legacy and I thank you for it.
Well said. Director Soons.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Don, I, I agree with what's been said. I mean, you, your longstanding tenure on here will certainly be missed. I still remember when, when I first got into office and, and was just coming to this board as an alternate, but whatever, your, one of my Facebook posts and you said, this guy bleeds Elk Grove, you know? And, and I would similarly say, you bleed Secog. The, your passion for this board is, is very clear. And, you know, we all know, we agree sometimes, but we also, we disagree. And there's very many passionate debates on, on these complex and important issues. And so, really give you kudos for, for standing your ground and coming to, to the table, always coming to the table, which is the most important thing. But just being well-informed on, on everything. Again, your leadership will be missed and I'll miss you too as you step back from public service completely. Best of luck.
Director Thomas.
My comments are similar to Director Soons. About 12 years ago, when I was a brand-new council member to the city of Placerville, I was also an alternate to the Secog board for a few years. And I remember the first few times I was around this table, I was totally intimidated and totally in awe of you, in awe of your, your leadership, your legacy, your ability to articulate issues and always looked up to you. And so, now, as I am a county supervisor, it's been a pleasure to serve with you as a colleague on this board and just wish you well in your next chapter. And just please know, you've left a legacy of service that has benefited the region. So, thank you, Don.
Director Saragosa.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one more thing that I didn't get to say while I was up there. And that is, and you said it well, Vice Chair, and that was, you know, you check yourself at the door when you come in here in terms of your, your jurisdiction, your county, whether it's your city. And you taught me a valuable lesson on that. And that is, you know, we're here as a region. And I think that, you know, that's a legacy that you leave behind. So, I just wanted to thank you for that as well.
Anyone else?
Don, I think it's all been said. The legacy that you leave behind is one that we will all stand on and we will build on it. I just want to let you know that you always have a seat here at Secog. So, now, he said in the audience. So, you can go after him. But no, I just want you to know, you always have a seat and your, your voice will always be heard. And we thank you for all the service that you've given. So, big round of applause, please.
Okay. We will now move to Director Spockley and Director Gore will present the plaque.
Can I say how much I appreciate all of you? As I sit here as we say goodbye to our colleagues, I am so grateful that we get to serve with so many wonderful folks. And I remember when Matt decided to run for the Auburn City Council and I was so excited because he was a leader in our community. And I thought, this, he's the type of man you want to serve for your community. Somebody who's hardworking, who's thoughtful. I think of Matt as a very, very quiet but strong leader. And when he says something, you pay attention because he's got a wealth of experience. And when he speaks, it, it really makes an impact. So, Matt was on the Auburn City Council. It's been eight years. I am very sad that he is leaving because he's done a great job as a council member. And he has served Secog for six years. He came in 2016. And during his time here at Secog, he has stepped up into leadership roles. He served as the vice chair of the Transportation Committee in 2021. He served as the chair of the Land Use and Natural Resources Committee. And he also was vice chair of Lunar in 2019. And what I appreciate about Matt is that his civil engineering background, his housing background, really helped guide conversations on the Lunar Committee as we were talking about housing and planning issues. And his perspective is, was often so very helpful. When we can pull from our expertise to inform our discussions on items, it's so very helpful. And Matt's experience has been very, very helpful. He also was a very strong supporter of Secog's initiative, the, the Green Means Go initiative. He worked really hard on that. And he's been a real champion of infill, development, housing, and especially in Auburn, where they don't have a lot of areas to grow, but they still have a housing need. And Auburn actually was awarded one of the first Green Means Go activation grants to develop form-based code for downtown. And that's because he decided to do the work and get invested and make sure that his community benefited from the work that we've done here at Secog. So, Matt has definitely been a person who has jumped in. His willingness to participate has been great. And I know I'm going to miss your thoughtful leadership, the experience that you bring to Secog. And I just want to say thank you, Matt, for not only your service to Secog, but to the Placer County region, all that you have done. We are certainly going to miss you. But I also know that we're not going to let him go that easily and that there is work that will find you, we know he's going to be participating in the background, whether it's transportation issues, housing issues. I know that we can rely on you to continue to help us. So, Matt, thank you so much for all of your hard work.
Bonnie, thank you very much. I too was very excited to see you step up from your city, city council seat to be a Placer County supervisor. You're doing an awesome job for us up in Placer County. So, thank you. To my fellow Secog directors, boy, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve by your side on this board. I, I, you know, similar to what Vice Chair Kennedy mentioned, I, I usually only speak when I've got some additive comments to make. So, that's why you don't hear much from me in this room. But my subcommittees that I served on, I really enjoyed because we got to have those conversations and share the, you know, share the expertise that I brought to the table and hear from others on those subcommittees, their expertise. And it was a big pleasure of mine, serving on those subcommittees. I'm going to miss public life, but when my wife and I talked about a, a third term, she said, you can run for a third term, but it'll be with a new wife. So, I said, I said, okay, message received. So, no, it's, it's truly been an honor to serve on this board. The work that this board does on a regional basis is just amazing to me. The fact that all of us walk through the doors and, and kind of check our local, you know, bias at the door and, and look globally and regionally is critically important. So, this was my favorite committee that I got appointed to. And I had to fight for it back six years ago to get on this committee. I found a new replacement and she's committed to it. So, I'm excited to say I've got a great replacement coming from the city of Auburn to serve on this board with you all. Thank you all, appreciate it very much, and good luck in 2023 for Secog.
All right. Board comments for Matt Spockley? You'll stay up there at the podium for us, please? Director Soons.
Thank you, Chair Jennings.
Thank you, Chair Jennings. Well, this one's really disheartening for me. They, I need to talk to your wife. Many people don't know us on the board, I don't think, but, you know, Matt and I, we've known each other nearly 20 years. We just, I don't know how we missed each other in college, you know, same major, same college, but we just, same time, we just didn't cross paths and worked together starting in 2004, doing land development stuff. So it was such an honor and also just a thrill that, who would have thought we both would have ended up in elected office? Then both ended up serving on the same board together for all these past years. And it's just been a privilege for me and an honor, again, to work with you on this board. I, your thoughtfulness and what you bring to the table is what Director Gore already mentioned will be sorely missed. And then again, personally, I will miss you serving on this board. But I know, you know, you are working in the back, quite literally, you are working in the background, a lot of our infrastructure projects and things. So we will see you often, but Matt, we'll definitely miss you, my friend. Thank you for your service.
Director Ferretts.
Yeah, Matt, thank you so much for your service on this board. I have really enjoyed working with you. I think Darren made these comments about the thoughtfulness. That's something that first really, so, I'm so appreciative of. I think all the conversations that I've had with you have been very thoughtful in nature. And so, and also, you know, the, your private sector experience, I mean, has just really, that, that is, you know, a lot of my experience frankly in life has been in the public sector. And so having that perspective and your background, when we've had conversations, especially about infrastructure and sort of land use stuff, that it's all been very, very meaningful and helpful to me. So I'm so grateful for your service on this board and I know how much you've done to contribute to your own community. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Matt, thank you so much for your service. Really appreciate all that you've done. Oh, we've got Paul Joyner that's going to, Paul, I'm going to let you go first.
Thank you, Chair. Bonnie really covered the majority of what I have to say, but I just want all of you to know and I want Matt to know what an incredibly important and influential voice he's been in Placer County to the entire region. But more than that, for me, he's been not just a great friend, but a great counsel when we've got difficult decisions to make on a, either a countywide basis or a regional basis. He's going to be incredibly missed. I don't think he has any idea how much influence he has had on all of us in Placer County. And this is a loss to the board as all of our board members departing today will be. I think we'll all feel it. And you're going to be missed, Matt, but I hope that you'll allow me to come up to Auburn every once in a while and maybe we can grab a drink and dinner together and our wives can visit while we reminisce about the hard work that you've led us all through. So thank you for your service. It's been vitally important.
So Matt, I'll close off just by saying again, thank you for your service to Secog, to this region, to the area that you serve. I want to be invited with my wife to that dinner so that we can come with you when you have it, so that I can get to know you better. But again, thank you for your service. Let's give them a round of applause, please. So Matt, stay up there if you will. And then the other recipients, all those who got their plaque, I'm going to take a group picture of those four while they're there. Can we do that? We got time? You guys will go up there to, in front of the art piece. I think that's a good backdrop. Well, from here, it looks like an art piece.
It should be in front of Golden One.
What is it, by the way?
It's our logo.
Okay, it's the logo.
It's an art piece, it's a logo, but it actually looks like an art piece. It's very nice. Three D.
It's a coupes.
One more big round of applause, please. So I hope I fulfilled my promise, but I'm not done yet. We've made it to the end of our agenda and the last thing we have on our agenda are reports. And so, for the chair's report, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize the last component of this team. I'd like to recognize the Secog staff, the ones who behind the scenes do all the work, the ones that never complain to us about their boss, the ones that never ask their boss for any additional money or raises or privileges or anything. He has never told me one time that the staff has ever done anything wrong as far as doing the work at Secog. He tells me nothing but great things about the incredible staff that they have here. And what I know about staff is, in all the jobs that I've done, is that you can tell by the tenure of the staff, you can tell the quality of the management, the jobs that they're doing, their happiness, you can tell. And so, I'd like, I'd like our Executive Director, James Corliss, to present the anniversaries and the new staff at Secog, the new staff that will continue to build on the work that has been, already been done, but also the tenure of the staff at Secog. And I want to present the first staff member at Secog. We're going to do this in five-year anniversaries, 10-year anniversaries, and 20-year anniversaries. And the first person that I want to present with a five-year anniversary with a big round of applause is our Executive Director, Mr. James Corliss. Okay, now, every time I play golf, I put that ball on the tee and I hit it, and then we go hit it again. It's now your turn.
All right. Well, yeah, thank you, Chair Jennings. And I know I don't have to, well, the first thing I would say is obviously, I think for all of us, right, and the agencies that you represent and your staff, it has been a heck of a three-year period. And it's been really challenging. It's been tough. And the job of a leader is to take on things that you don't expect, right, that you least expect. So I will not say this has been an easy three years, but I will say, I'm proud of the team that we have. You see maybe 15% or 20% of our staff who are the regulars who come up and present and give you the updates and present the staff items and the staff reports. But there's a lot of people you don't see. And they're doing work that is vitally important and just as important as the job I do and the job a lot of people that you see every, every, every committee and board meeting does. I'm going to read, as Chair Jennings said, just some of the milestone anniversaries. I'm going to recognize some of the new staff, but I also want to make sure you all understand, we're a relatively small but mighty team. We have fewer than 60 staff here. Many people think it's hundreds on our, on our staff, like a lot of our sister agencies around the state. And I think that's because the people who work here are passionate about what they do. They really believe in the future of this region, the mission, the vision that you've articulated this year through the strategic plan. And so I just want to say, my job is a hell of a lot easier when I have really good staff. You know that's a truism. And we really do have a dedicated team. So, yeah, you've mentioned how long I've been here, but I want to just make sure that we recognize staff. And we have some in here who are here today. But in terms of anniversaries, passing five-year milestones this year, Caroline Payne, Jessica Lee, Jessica is here. I just want to take a moment to recognize Jessica on our admin team, but really making everything run incredibly smoothly behind the scenes. Warren Navarro, Christina Lockey, Dove Caden, and Kyle Shipley, all passing five-year anniversaries this year. The 10-year mark was reached by somebody I know you hear from quite a lot, Victoria Cacciatore. Victoria is often described as a treasure in this region for active transportation and all your bicycle and pedestrian and trails work. She's really a remarkable, a remarkable asset to this agency. And believe this or not, at 20 years, you have your very own Deputy Executive Director, Casey Lazon, sitting right next to me, who has passed a 20-year. Casey does not like to be recognized, so let's make sure you make her feel really embarrassed. And, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And Jeannie Hong as well, who works on a lot of our data and analysis. And again, many of these folks who work behind the scenes, who produce a lot of the things that you see in the staff report, or maybe you take for granted, or you don't see at all, but are the reasons that I'm proud to work here. And this agency, I think, produces outcomes like you saw in the annual report. Part of that challenge, as well as I mentioned, over those last three years, and I don't think it's necessarily a bad one sometimes, but it's turnover, right? We've had a lot of people retire. We've had a lot of people move on and take on new opportunities, and I think that's great. Not wonderful, but it's, it's, it's good for them and we applaud that. I think, I love knowing that we're actually putting also some people into more challenging roles in different places, that they're going on to agencies actually that can help us and can help our region. But we also, this morning, want to recognize our new, our new staff. When I was here for an in-person staff meeting just a couple of months ago, I looked around the room and I said, "Who's been here less than a year?" And an amazing number of hands went up. And then I said, "Who's been here less than five years?" And more than half of our staff's hands went up, right? And I'm sure this may be very similar to what you experience in your own jurisdictions. We have a lot of new staff here. And that, that theme that I heard some of you mentioned this morning about each other, about your colleagues and your peers, that when you walk in a door, are you feeling that you're welcomed? Are you feeling that you're a part of the team? Are you feeling that you, even if you are intimidated and you're not quite sure what you're doing or if you should be here, are you being welcomed by your peers, right? And that's something we certainly strive to in this agency, making people feel welcome and included and part of this team. So I just want to recognize we have some people who are here in person. The following staff who have been hired in this last calendar year. Ibrahim Itani, a transportation analyst who has joined. Is Ibrahim, you want to stand up? Come on. There we go. Oh, we got Victoria back here too. Okay, I was going to, I'll make her stand up next. I didn't see you there, Victoria. Nick Donahue, who is not here, but who I've known for a long time, has brought tremendous transportation experience to our transportation team. Celia Sepulveda, our accounting specialist, Celia. We can do applause, by the way. I think, I think that's totally fine. All right. Please stop me if somebody's here and I haven't seen them in the back. Heather Luke, our new procurement officer. We do a lot of procurement and accounting and contracts. We, we do a lot of work here, again, maybe that you don't all see. But whenever you're in the policy committee and we come through and we have an audit either with some minor things or a very clean audit, that is, that is a very big deal. I know I don't have to convince you of those things. And since my time here, we've really had to rebuild our financing, accounting, and procurement team. And we've done that. I will just recognize Loretta Sue behind me as well, who's your finance manager, and she has rebuilt that team to be pretty awesome, I will say. And Celia is one of those people there. As well as Heather. Also Craig McLean, an analyst. I don't think Craig is with us today, okay? Josiah Johnson, is Josiah here?
She's at the front desk.
Oh, she's, see, she's at the front desk, right? So she's, she's, she's out there, but she's been with us and has just brought a tremendous amount of, of energy and goodwill and she's been fantastic addition. Gabriela Herrera, or Gabby, is new in our Legislative External Affairs as our coordinator in our Legislative External Affairs team. She comes from Congresswoman Matt Suie's office and brings a tremendous amount of experience in terms of connections and networks around the region. Lauren Batalias is our Senior Program Manager for Innovative Mobility. Lauren is part of our transportation team, as I said, working on innovative mobility, and we are really, really thankful to have her. Alex Cole Weiss, part of our External Affairs team, our External Affairs Analyst. Really happy to have Alex. Miguel Mendoza, our Senior Transportation Programs and Funding Analyst. I don't think Miguel can join us. And also, starting on Monday, we have, and I have a new executive assistant who's not here today named Samantha Merrich, an Elk Grove resident. I'm just, I'm just giving a shout out for those of you that bleed Elk Grove. But Renee Handy, who I know many of you know, is being promoted and taking on new and bigger challenges here on our staff. And so you'll be hearing from Samantha a lot when she starts next week. And those are our new staff hires from the past year. And I just want to give my own tremendous shout out and thank you to all the staff who work incredibly hard, who are dedicated, who are passionate, who show up on behalf of the region every day, every week, and just do tremendous, tremendously good work. So heartfelt thank you from me. With that, back to you, Chair Jennings.
Okay. What I'm going to do is I'm going to stand up because I want to give them a standing ovation.
Exactly.
So we have made it to the end of our agenda. And I want to let you know that the next board meeting will be on January the 19th at 9:30. It will take place right here in this board room. I'm going to save my remarks for having served as your chair until the January board meeting. And then I will pass the gavel to Chair-elect Patrick Kennedy, Director Kennedy, which I am so happy and confident in his ability to keep you excited, to tell you all the great stories that I've told you, to keep you encouraged, to pump you up, get you going, to win the game.
That's enough.
I know that you will all have a wonderful holiday season. We are looking forward to coming back together in, in January. Tell me again.
I just wondered if there were any other board member reports before?
Oh, that's right. And I haven't adjourned it totally yet. So I will take other reports at this point in time.
Thank you. I just want, I'm being, meaning, get all the great, wanted to invite on Saturday to announce ribbon cutting open, just over two months of our trip at Whitney Bridge. We're excited. Hope y'all enjoy.
Director Gialdo, this is Lynette, if you can hear me.
Actually, how about this, since it was hard to hear Director Gialdo, she was sharing that Rockland, the city of Rockland is having a ribbon cutting for the expanded trails that they are opening up, part of that trail network in the city of Rockland. So if you're in the area, want to enjoy some trails, Rockland has some new ones that are multipurpose and beautiful in an old golf course area.
Awesome. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Other reports. Director Kennedy.
I'm going to be somewhat cryptic in my report, but just to say that it's appropriate around this table, that we hear a lot of friction often about between cities and counties. It's in every county, I've learned throughout California. It's unnecessary, and I think it's overblown, quite frankly. I think the media likes to talk about it. But I'll give you a sneak peek, that there's going to be an announcement made later today that debunks that myth and shows that the city and county of Sacramento can work very closely together on an issue that is very important to all of us. I'll leave it at that.
This Saturday, I know there's also the truck parade in Winters, but if you have time to go to two places, we also have our holiday parade starting at around noon.
Sunday.
Sunday, Sunday, that's right. So you can do both, actually.
Yeah.
Come to Placerville for the parade and then to Winters for the truck on Saturday.
Okay, I have some. Okay, last Monday, I met with Real Vision and Real Vista because we are having problems with Highway 12 and 160. I'm sure you've seen on the news, like, a wreck every other day on both of those highways. And the working group is, like, we're just, our second meeting on this, our working group title is Delta Transportation Coalition. So we're trying to brainstorm what to do with, like, how to alleviate these problems on both those highways because we've noticed people use those roads to, like, cut through between, let's say on Highway 12, between I-80 and I-5 and 99. So you're talking about multiple counties and probably multiple, like, counties of governments, because not just Secog, you got East Bay, you got, like, San Joaquin as well. So that was my report on transportation issues.
Thank you, thank you. Director Clark Ritz. Director Clark Crick.
Thank you, Chair. And actually, this is in response to the staff at Secog. I just wanted to extend a heartfelt thanks from me to the staff at Secog for making me feel welcome and everybody else that walks in that door. Congratulations to Casey Lazon for her 20 years. You're fantastic. Lynette Espinoza, you are amazing and always have made me feel welcome. And I know to all the board members as well, you are, you do such a hard job. Garrett Ballard, Katie Bredy, Victoria. Trails has been wonderful. Greg Chu, thank you for coming to all of our jurisdictions and explaining these hard things. Clint Holton, Eric Johnson, Dolph Cadden, Rosie Ramos, Robert Caddick. Thank you for organizing all of us. Thank you, James. Again, just amazing staff. I just wanted you guys to know that it's so impressive what you do, and thank you very much.
Good job, good job. You're here. Other reports?
Chair Jennings, I got a brief report. But, and just, I want to make sure other board members have had their chance.
Yeah, I think, I think you can go right now.
Great. All right. Just to wrap all this up, I, it's been mentioned, the Urban Land Institute did their final sort of report on those two commercial corridors, one, North Wad, unincorporated Sacramento County, the other in, in the city of Folsom. There's a link that I sent around. They were fantastic in terms of their findings. And you could basically take these lessons learned and apply them to any of your aging retail corridors all over the entire six-county region. Remember, that was funded by Green Means Go. We were, we were just delighted to have an expert panel come in here for an entire week and dig deep into our. And all hope is not lost, so there's a lot of optimism there. There are no January committee meetings. I think you understand that, but just to make sure, in case you start texting us on January 7th or 8th, there are no committee meetings. You will not convene again until the January 19th board meeting. And at that time, it's been referenced, but we will be, and Chair Lake Kenny will be denouncing the committee assignments and committee leadership for the year. If by any chance you have not put in your requests for committee assignments, and there's only a few of you, please do that so we can round that out. Obviously, we're going to be welcoming some new board members, given the retirements. We will be doing a buddy system again. So if you're interested as a, as a returning board member to be paired up with one of our new board members, please let Lynette know about that. You heard, or maybe read, we have a great, we have great applications for our Youth Leadership Academy. We've got great geographic diversity in that. That's going to be starting up soon, so thank you for that. I will just put another reminder out. As we were running through all of our new state legislators who will be representing this six-county region next year, there's a lot of new faces, and I bet you know many of them. And we are going to need those relationships, and we'll be coming back to you, as this board has talked about, the very least on legislation to extend the timeline on our blueprint, sustainable community strategy. But we're going to need an entire effort from the entire six-county delegation. So just a heads up on that, all those new faces. Please make sure that you, if you have those relationships and make those connections. And just finally, really quickly, because I didn't want to extend out the, the thank yous and the recognition too far. But for the three board members who are retiring, who I didn't send anything about, Director New Pierre, you have shown me, and you showed me early on in my tenure here when I came out to visit Winters, what, what passion for your community looks like. And from then on, I'm telling all of my friends all over Northern California to go, go to Winters, visit Winters. And now people stay over, and it's the, it's the, it's the, one of the greatest downtowns we have in our region. Thank you for your, and your support and your kind words. Director Spockley, it's, much has been said, but your, your counsel and your cool head over the last, you know, four years in my time here has been really welcomed. I appreciate our conversations very much so, and your advice and your perspective on things. You're an excellent board member, and I really appreciate that. And Director Saylor, so much has been said, but your hard-fighting tenacity for the region and your, your ability to understand how this region is linked, what it can be, to not fall short of that aspiration, to hold us all to account to that. We don't even think, understand really the, your legacy. But I have some sense, and I just can't thank you enough for it. So with that, end my report.
Thank you, sir. We will see you in January, January the 19th at 9:30 here in this room. Enjoy your holidays with family and friends. Make sure that you help someone along the way. There are a lot of people who are in need, and I know that we will all do that. And if there are any relationships that you need to patch up from now to January, this is a great time to do so, right? So my best to you during the holidays. Enjoy yourself. Look forward to seeing you in 2023.